I'm going to call this to order of the December 5, 2024 meeting. And please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So can we get a roll call of Commissioners present, please?
Commissioner Scabdal.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Mulder.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Curieazi.
Here.
Commissioner McFarland.
Looks like we got a quorum. So do we have any, Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We do, Chair. We would like to propose to you moving an item from the public hearing, which is item G2 Punt de Cana. And we had intended to have this on consent, but for whatever reason, it ended up under public hearing. So if you wanted to read this off as a consent item and see if there's anybody that wants to talk about it, that would be something you could do. It's up to you. There are also some supplementals up here. One is, well, actually, I think, I believe they're both related to PG&E. We've received a letter from a public organization expressing some concern with some of the conditions, and we reviewed them and made the changes because they did catch some things that were, that should have been itemized differently. And so we've provided that to the Commission as a second supplemental. And so, and if the Commission wants to leave it on consent, we would recommend leaving it on consent with the changes contained in the supplemental. If you want to talk about it, that's certainly your, within your discretion.
Okay, so I just want to clarify. What I heard is there was a letter received and the, the points, some of the letter, points in the letter have been, the staff report is, and conditions of approval has since been adjusted. So you feel confident in leaving it on the consent as long as the Commission or someone else in the public doesn't want to pull it off?
That is correct.
Okay. That works for me. So we will move to public comment on non-agenda items. So is anyone in the room want to speak on non-agenda items? Anyone on Zoom want to speak on non-agenda items? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on from public comment on non-agenda items. And we'll go to consent. And first off, we will add in consent, consent item 1A, Punto Cana. We will add that into the consent. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like to not move that consent? Please let me know. Anyone in the room that would like to not see that project moved to consent, which would mean it would be approved? Anyone on Zoom want to remove that? Seeing no hands, we will leave that. So now we will move to consent agenda item one, which includes the supplementals. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like to see that removed from consent? One, two, three. Okay. So consent agenda item one will come off. Consent agenda item two, anyone on the Commission that want to see that removed? Okay, seeing one. Items one and two. Consent agenda item three. Is there anyone on the Commission? Okay. One, two, three. Okay. Consent agenda item four, Tierra Verde Holdings LLC Conditional Use Permit. Is there anyone on the Commission that wants to see that removed? Anyone in the audience that wants to see that removed? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none. That'll stay on consent. Consent agenda item number five, Hornstein Final Map Subdivision. Anyone on the Commission? Anyone in the public? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none. That will stay on consent. Item number six, Ramirez Lot Line Adjustment and Minor Subdivision. Is there anyone on the Commission? Anyone in the room? Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Okay, so that will stay on consent. So I'm looking for a motion for items 1A, 4, 5, and 6.
Share. Sorry. Go ahead.
I was going to say so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. All those in favor will do a voice vote here. Please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. So now we will move on to old business, I believe?
Yes.
Sorry. It's tricky because I turned the page, but actually it says right here. So old business, Ten Redwoods LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit, which this is a continuation from our last meeting.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the, members of the public attending. My name is Andrew Whitney. I'm a planner here with Humboldt County Planning Department. This is a continuance of Conditional Use Permit that was scheduled for denial at the last meeting. The Planning Commission moved to continue the item pending additional information. So I've got a short presentation on what we've, updating the Commission. Yeah, excuse me. Sorry about the delay here. It's not working.
It's not showing his screen share. You're on Zoom. Go ahead and put it into display mode and then they'll pull it up on the.
Yeah, I can see it here.
Okay. Put it in display mode.
Where's display mode? Oh, you are screen sharing. Display settings.
There you go.
Okay.
Oops. Okay, this is the Ten Redwoods Conditional Use Permits and Special Permit application, 11-737 CUP. I'm going to present the timeline. Okay. What's going on? There we go.
What'd you hit, Ryan?
Arrow.
Arrow, okay. So I'm going to present a project timeline here. The project was scheduled for approval on October 3, 2024, the Planning Commission. On October 2, the Bear Fire occurred, which is the day before the scheduled hearing. The project was continued at that time to November 7 because we were still gathering information about the fire and various aspects of that. Staff has gathered additional information, prepared a new staff report for, well, no, that's incorrect, the December, today's meeting. Oh, okay. So we did inspect the site on November 8 and prepared, an inspection, an inspection report was prepared. And I have an update to follow here. I don't know why is that weird square showing up? Okay. So we did send an inspector out the day after last month's hearing. The inspection did not identify any evidence of any kind of ongoing water theft. You're looking at a photo that's taken from the road right of way towards where the, the well on the adjoining parcel was located. The gate was locked and there was no evidence of piping, generators, or any activity at the wellhead. The November 8 inspection did identify five 5,000 gallon water tanks that were burned in the fire. And, you know, you can see some evidence of, of the fire in these pictures. The inspector did take a look at the pond. There was more water in the pond on November 8 than there was on August 21. As far as fire damage, two structures were burned in the fire. The Ag Petroleum Storage Shed, which was slated to be relocated as part of the project, and the 20 by 30 drying shed was also burnt in the fire. The inspector did note that most of the damage associated with the fire was cleaned up. And I don't know, so we have a loose connection or something here? What's going on? It went back to that.
It's still on Zoom.
It's still on Zoom.
But the screen is black.
Okay.
Oh, there it came back on.
Is it back on Zoom?
Yeah, maybe full screen.
Share. Display settings. Duplicate slideshow. Okay, we're back. Sorry about that. So as I said, there were two structures that were burned in the fire. The debris from those structures were mostly cleaned at the time of the inspection on November 8. I did conduct an interview with the applicant shortly after the hearing last month. According to the applicant, the worker was on, there was a worker on site. The worker did attempt to fight the fire, discharged two fire extinguishers. The worker did panic and he left the scene. It's a little less clear in terms of what happened with the generator. The worker may have set it up, may not have set it up. I'm not sure, based on my conversation with the applicant, what the story was on, on that. The applicant has contacted the neighbors and the complainant, Mr. Paesos, and subsequently told me that the neighbor's concerns have been assuaged. And are there, we'll, we'll see if they have public comments on, on this project tonight. The applicant has paid all their fees for the additional staff time that were incurred for staff to attend what is now three public hearings and two different proposals, resolutions, and staff reports. And so tonight, the Commission has three options before them. One is to deny the project as recommended on November 7 after the fire. Number two would be to approve the project as recommended on October 3, which was the first time this was, came to the Commission, obviously, after the fire. And the third option is, the staff recommended option at this point, is to approve the project with additional conditions applied. So the recommendation is revise the conditions of approval for the project, find that the Planning Commission is considered the adendum to the mitigated negative declaration, make all the required findings for the Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit based on the evidence in the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the Ten Redwoods project. I'm going to go through the recommended additional conditions at this point. The first is, and I have the, the wording for these conditions, so I'm just, this is just kind of outline of the conditions. The applicant will be subject to an additional inspection, a preseason inspection to verify stored water condition of the road and compliance with Condition B32, which is the workplace safety and employee training condition that requires employees to be trained in emergency response and also have a list of emergency responders to contact in the case of emergencies. Oh, sorry. The applicant will also be required to submit a revised site and operations plan prior to cultivating in 2025 if, if the project is approved. And the project will be subject to a reduced cultivation area until the applicant determines if a water right is required for the pond and secures that water right if needed.
Andrew, before you go onto that slide, could you go back to the previous slide and explain why we're recommending those conditions?
We're recommending those conditions because we have evidence that the operation was not being operated consistent with the submitted site and operations plan based on the evidence provided by the neighbor with the allegations of, of water theft from the well. And the pond that is one of the sources for the project's water is, has been, well, CDFW has made a determination that this is an onstring pond. And so in the strictest sense of our regulations, we cannot allow this pond as a eligible water source. Therefore, we can't allow the water that would come from that pond as a source of water for the project. So we are reducing the project to the size that can be supported by the water right that they have for the point of diversion on this project. So they do have a water right for a point of diversion, and that will, and they will be limited using that water for cultiv, cultivation. Okay, so yeah, this is a little more detail on the first proposed additional condition. And, you know, I can read this out, or you all can read it. The applicant shall pay a deposit for two annual inspections. One inspection will, shall be scheduled for May and will verify the quantity of stored water, the condition of ridge road, and compliance with Condition B32. The second inspection will be added to the standard compliance inspection schedule. So in other words, we'll get two visits from our inspectors, one in the spring before cultivation is really initiated, and the second will be during the season, just to make sure that the project is being operated per the terms of the site plan and the operations plan. The cultivation area shall be limited to 7,282 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation until conditions A4 and A5 are met. So this is the reduced cultivation area that we're proposing for the project, based on the square footage of cannabis that can be, excuse me, cultivated with the, their secured water right from the point of diversion. I will just mention that we've also conditioned the applicant to meter their point of diversion and meter the water coming out of their storage tanks. So they're limited to what they can gather from the point of diversion. They do have adequate stor, more than adequate storage, but they don't have a secured source of water for the entirety of their storage. So they'll be limited to 70,000 gallons of water annually, roughly. Prior to cultivating in 2025, the permatee shall submit a revised site plan showing the location of the 7,282 square feet of outdoor cultivation, the location of the fire suppression water tank, and the proposed location for the new fertilizer and fuel storage and drying shed. They will also be required to submit a revised operation plan and provide evidence, or provide details on compliance with Condition of Approval B32. And so that wraps up the update presentation. I have, if anyone wants a recap of the project basic, you know, basic aspects of the project, I'm more than willing to do that, but I think we should just open it up to comments and questions.
Commissioner O'Neill.
So if the, the applicant wants to replace the structures that were lost in the fire, then they'll go through the permitting process with the county to rebuild those structures?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Your, your presentation was good and made a lot of sense, but I'm just really puzzled because it, it seems to bear very little resemblance to the written staff report, that I have at least, and also the resolution. I was already going to raise questions about this because although the, while I'm looking at a staff report dated 12/05, it's almost as if, it doesn't make any reference to anything occurring after the November 5 Planning Commission. So it doesn't, doesn't make reference to our request for an inspection, much less anything that that inspection showed. It only says that denial is being recommended. The resolution says denial is being recommended. So I'm just, I'm first just being sort of thrown for a loop here. It's not the recommendation of the staff that we deny this, but rather that we approve it with these additional conditions.
That is correct. We have kind of a timeline for our staff reports, and we didn't have the information gathered and collated essentially before press time. And the item that was continued at the last meeting was the recommendation of denial. So we continue that item and without necessarily revising it on the fly because we'd be continuing a different item, essentially. So we're coming to the Planning Commission tonight with new information. Again, this is Planning Commission discretion, and there's three options available to the Commission, essentially. You know, a fourth would be to continue it some more, but there's three options, and I hope I've explained that.
Well, no, you did. I, I don't, you know, I'm not trying to just be a process nerd or something. I, I just was confused and surprised. But then specifically, I just wanted to follow up on what you said about, I mean, to me, the most troubling allegations or, you know, concerns at the, at the last hearing on this did concern the alleged theft of water, although there were other concerns, certainly. I sort of hear, heard, I think I heard you say two things. On the one hand, the inspector and that photo you showed seemed to be saying the next day after our hearing that there was no evidence of water theft from the neighbor's parcel. Is that correct? Or he didn't, he or she did not see evidence?
That is correct. There was no evidence of water theft on the day of the inspection, which was November 8.
And was it that same neighbor who made that allegation whose concerns you said were assuaged when you spoke to them sometimes subsequently?
I spoke to the applicant, and the applicant stated that they had talked to that neighbor.
I see. Okay. But then, in the condition, the, the new condition that you're recommending, it does seem to be premised on a concern about the water supply. And I'm just, could you just restate that? I just need a little clarification about the basis for that concern? If, if there's not, is, is that not to do with the alleged water theft, but rather to do with the finding that the stream is in, is, that the pond is an instream pond by CDFW?
The alleged water theft has generated uncertainty about the security of the water for the project. Therefore, the water for the project will be strictly limited to what is definitely ineligible water source. The pond issue, we had conditioned in the original staff report for approval that the applicant would secure verification from the Division of Water Rights that either they needed a water right or they did not. If they did need a water right, they're conditioned to secure that water right in two years. But under the revised conditions, we said, well, we're going to forego that leniency and just say you are only eligible to utilize your, the, the water secured under the water right from the point of diversion. Period.
All right. Well, thank you.
If I could jump in a little bit on that. I think it's important. It is complicated because there is the point of diversion, which is 70,000 gallons that's allowed per year. And then there's a much bigger water source, which is the pond. And, and so the pond's not really legal. And it's on covering ground that Mr. Whitney just mentioned. But then, you know, the, the interesting factor or the complicating factor is the picture that we saw of the well. And, and the well is not on the complainant's property. It's on a separate piece of property. And I'm not aware that that person has complained or even mentioned anything about this. It is disturbing that we've seen a picture with infrastructure that would seem to say that they're pumping water out of this well. So the struggle that we have oftentimes and not wanting to think like code enforcement people all the time, but can we really prove that that's what they did? It's a picture that we can't confirm. We went out, looked at the wellhead. That infrastructure wasn't there. So part of the thing that we're also presenting is that that's why we're wanting to also make sure that we meticulously meter the water and then also inspect the site early. And so that's a very unusual condition, is to go out and make sure the water's in place and then do the normal inspection. So metering and additional inspection is really to safeguard against the temptation to want to take water from another source that's not authorized if that temptation avails itself.
Thanks for that explanation.
Any other questions, Commissioner West, and then Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you. And this isn't necessarily a question so much as I think a process request. I think similar to Commissioner Levy, I'm getting a lot of information last minute. It's challenging, particularly on a project that has a lot going on with it. In the future, would it be possible for us, when you have conditions of approval written out, for us to have them in front of us also? That would be, I think, a little bit helpful for my brain to, to keep up.
Absolutely. I apologize for, for that. And apologize to you all for not having a staff report that really reflected what we experienced when we went out to the site because we did go out and inspect the following day, as, as you had asked if that could be done. And the applicant worked with us to do that. That was accomplished. And, and so that should have been in the staff report. I wasn't aware that it wasn't. I apologize for not following up on that myself.
Commissioner O'Neill.
So how long do these conditions go? These extra conditions go on forever, or is there a limit?
The additional monitoring requirement, we proposed three years. That could be modified by the Commission. The revised operations plan is due before cultivating in 25. And the, the limitation on the cultivation area is enforced until the applicant provides evidence of an authorized water source. evidence of an authorized water source for the additional 30,000 and change in gallons of water that they need to cultivate the 11,700 square feet that would, would have been authorized by the initial.
Okay. So one other question, and I might have missed this, I was here when we talked about it the first time, but the person who complained, who doesn't own the property, did they submit evidence, a photograph? Did they take a photograph of this alleged theft, or they just said it was a theft?
They did submit a photograph, and I believe that was in the staff report.
And did it prove that there was theft, or was it just a?
Well, that it showed a generator and a pipe and.
Leading to this.
Leading to the thing, the, yeah.
Okay.
And if I could just, because that is disturbing. The struggle is, is when it comes to proving that that was something this applicant did.
Or that he even was aware of it.
Right. And, and particularly since for us to even show a picture of it would meant that we would be trespassing on that other neighbor's property that's not the complaining neighbor to get that picture.
Commissioner Scavdall.
As I recall, the CAL FIRE report said the fire allegedly started from faulty electrical service or something to do with electrical equipment. When you made the site visit, was there any evidence of the electrical construction or, you know, what was, what the cause was and what was going on around the electrical equipment?
The site was pretty cleaned up when we visited the site. There was no, you know, charred fans or dehumidifiers or extension cords in evidence during the site visit. Obviously, there was some random pieces of metal that were still there, but there was no evidence of the generator. There was no evidence of the faulty electrical equipment that, you know, CAL FIRE indicated was the cause of the fire.
Commissioner Curiezi? To get a little bit more sense of timing, did the, the staff report and the recommendation that was included in the agenda, was that just for procedural reasons, that was just simply continued per the previous? Was, did staff start receiving information immediately after, like, starting with that inspection and during this, over this last month, that was leading you to this recommendation of approval? Or, or I guess what I'm getting at is, did you start getting engagement with the applicant after the agenda was posted of denial? Or, I'm trying to, was the applicant cooperative with you over this last month?
Yes, the applicant was cooperative. I've been on the phone with Mr. Tielofsky several times, trying to get a sense of what happened out there. And also, you know, not unimportantly, the staff time involved in doing these multiple hearings, multiple staff reports essentially adds up quickly, and Mr. Tielofsky has paid those bills. So, and that is, it's not, it's not a carte blanche thing that happens with all our applicants. So he's definitely been responsive. He is here tonight, I believe. And, you know, it, he, he has reasons that he wasn't engaged in the operation, and I think I'll leave those reasons to him to explain. But he, he has been engaged. The, and this is a, it's a difficult decision for staff and for the commission. It's, you know, we understand this, but he, he is, he has engaged with us and, and he's been cooperative and has, has taken the steps that I suggested, you know, in terms of contacting neighbors and making sure that all was good in the neighborhood essentially after this fire, so.
Any other questions from the commission? So I'm just going to walk through a couple of questions. I'm going to ask them kind of in a slow fashion, but just to make sure, I believe I have my head wrapped around it before I open public comment and have the, so what I've heard, you know, there was evidence presented that could be troubling as far as water, potential theft or misuse of water. So with these revised conditions of approval, staff has conditioned, if approved, to meter the water coming into the tanks, the water coming out of the tanks, have a preseason inspection so that way staff can verify there's enough water for the cultivation. And so before, in May, staff will know, okay, you can plant X amount of square feet or reduced amount of, so what I'm hearing is staff believes those conditions will mitigate any potential water theft concerns and protect the county from any potential lawsuits. Okay. Thank you. So now I'll open the public comment portion, which starts with the applicant. We get 15 minutes, up to 15 minutes to present, and then you have up to five minutes to, for any rebuttals after public comment, if you so choose.
Good evening, Director Ford and the commission. I just add a couple of things that I think might be beneficial. We have already been engaged with the Division of Water Rights. There, back in 2019, when I was engaged, or I'm the consultant on the project, when I began consulting on the project, there was a determination back then that the pond was not an on-stream pond. So there's some conflicting information that we're working through. Regardless, we believe that the conditions the county are presenting will allow us the time to figure that out. Second to that is the recipient, or the client, my applicant, my client, is also a water grant recipient that has not been executed yet, which would allow for us additional storage, potential rain catchment, that I think will alleviate a lot of other issues. Those are the main points that I think will help you on decisions. I can also go into a bunch of other things, but I believe those are important in terms of the water, which I think is critical.
Good evening, Director Ford. I did, I did spoke with, with a member that was on-site on the fire, and they, they did confirm that they discharged those two fire extinguishers, and there was a hose that also they used in the, it was in the background. And after 10 to 15 minutes, they left the property. That's, that's what I was said. That's what was said directly to me, so I'm, when it comes to water, like I said before, there's, there's no reason to, to take water from anybody, anyone's property, and there is plenty of water on, on that property that I've utilized these last four years, from the storage tank and the pond, previous years. I did spoke with, with the neighbors. I did met with them. I heard their concerns. I'm with good relations with them, and if there's other concerns, they can reach, reach out to me directly if they have my, my contact info. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner West?
We discussed this previously a little bit, but I'd like to revisit. Did anyone on your property attempt to report the fire to the fire department or connect after they left the property?
I did not, no.
Okay. And then my other question for you was, can you just confirm, it sounds like you're saying that you're confident that no one from your property connected to that water source?
No, I didn't say that. I'm not confident, but there was, there's no reason for water theft.
Okay. Can you tell me a little bit more about, have you talked to your staff? Like, did anybody attempt to connect to that well? Can you tell us whether or not anybody did connect to that well?
Yeah, they might have connected, then without my permission. I didn't see them, so I, I wasn't there if they had done it, so.
What do you mean by might have?
One more time, then?
What do you mean by might have? Like, did you, did you ask them and they, they said?
I have not instructed anyone to, to connect to the wall, so I'm not going to say that they have not connected.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm going to piggyback on that. So what I'm hearing you say is nobody was authorized from your staff to connect to that well.
That's correct, yes.
But you cannot guarantee 100% that they didn't connect to that well without your authorization?
Well, no, I say they, they might have connected, and I apologize if that's what has happened. I'll take responsibility, but I cannot prove I wasn't there when they connected, and so.
So you're, what I hear you saying, let me just, if somebody connected to that, they didn't have your authorization?
That's right.
And if somebody did connect to that, they have not said to you directly, yes, I connected to that water?
Well, they, I guess they, they did connect it, and I, I don't know what, I, I don't know what, what to tell you. I apologize if, if there was a water theft done by my staff. I do apologize, and I'll take full responsibility for it.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission? What we're going, do you have anything else to present, sir?
No.
Okay. Wait, Commissioner Scavdall has a question.
How did the fire start?
I don't know. The gentleman that was on-site, when he came to the shed, the shed was already on fire. That's, that's what he told me. And I was next to him to walk me through. That's why the, the previous time I didn't have this information, so I didn't want to speak of, just without exact information. Generator was on, and I, I don't know. The generator was on where? Next to that shed there, that Andrew has also.
Generator's in the shed, or is?
Outside, outside the shed. Generator was outside on the west side of the shed.
Okay.
Yeah. And when he, when he said when he saw the fire, the, the shed was already on fire.
Okay.
And he did try to fight it, and he, you know, I asked him even how many minutes, like, well, what did you do? And he explained, but then, you know, at that point, he, he left the farm at some point, 10, 15 minutes later.
Thank you.
And then, any other questions? So I have another question. You've, you've heard all of the recommended conditions if the commission does decide to go forward with approval. Are you in agreements with that? And more importantly, are you willing to take full responsibility whether your staff has authorization or not authorization, that if something's done out of compliance that would affect and jeopardize the permit?
I agree, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go out to public comment, and if there's anything that comes up, you're allowed up to five minutes for rebuttal, sir.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else in the room for public comment, so anybody on Zoom, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom. Oh. Yep, not seeing anybody on Zoom raising their hand. So I will come back to the applicant. Does the applicant want to add anything to their presentation before I close public Is there anything you would like to add to your presentation before I close public comment?
Yeah. And just one more thing. I will be there next year. I will do monitor more often, physically be at the farm to make sure that procedures are followed.
Thank you. Yep. So now at this time, I will close public comment, and I will ask staff if anything they heard they would like to comment on, or?
I don't have anything to add.
I'm ready to make a resolution. You ready?
I, I don't know where to go on this one. Mixed emotions, mixed thoughts, there's, so I'm, I'm not trying to drive this as the chair, so I'm more trying to listen to where I feel the commission is and help guide them where they want to go. Commissioner Curiezi?
Yeah, I think this is a tough one as well. I think I'll take a sort of benefit of the doubt approach and consider a situation where a series of situations, you know, arose that isn't, that potentially is not necessarily the applicant's fault, but reflects potentially some management issues around staff, who they're choosing to manage the property, how they're enforcing their rules or their procedures. So I, I think, and especially in light of we're not seeing public comment, we're not seeing neighbors weigh in, and, and it sounds like staff is reasonably comfortable. I think I sense a little bit of hesitation still. I think I'm, I think I'd lean towards approving.
With all the added recommendations?
That's correct. With all that, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
I think, actually, I really second what Commissioner Curiezi just said. And I would just note that there are, these, these conditions are fairly extraordinary. I mean, they're, they're definitely unusual. They do add a burden, and they do add a level of safeguard that I think can support the findings that we need to make. But I would also just take the opportunity to stress to the applicant that, that what you said when you last came up was, was pretty important. You are telling us that you will be more present on the farm and, and better able to oversee the, the activities of your staff to present, to prevent any inappropriate activities to do with water, to do with anything else. And I think that's, that's important, that, that we're hearing you say that. So, thanks.
I'm ready to make a resolution.
So, so I kind of maybe hear almost the first and the second.
Can I make it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to, to make a motion to, the resolution that's attached needs to be modified because it's a resolution for denial.
If, if I, if I could, sorry to interrupt, but the resolution would be the resolution that is attached in attachment number two. It's the staff report from 10-3. That's the resolution and conditions there that we're referring to. So that would be the resolution for approval.
So the resolution that includes the recommendations that were presented today.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve that and find that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the state secret guidelines, section 15270, and find that the application has provided sufficient evidence with modifications necessary to make the required findings for approval with all staff conditions as presented today on 12/5/2024.
Do you have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. So any discussion?
Appreciate the motion that was made. I will not be supporting the motion. The, there was a fire on the site that could have, fortunately, the neighbors and local volunteers were able to get it under control and put it out. It could have been as serious as some of the fires that we've seen in the valley and other parts of the country. Fortunately, it wasn't. I think it was even neglect and failure on the applicant's part, regardless of whether he was there or staff was there. So I will not be supporting the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner West?
I'm struggling a lot with this one. I, I can empathize with that, that things are, things happen, but it's, things happen, but also, like, this was a very serious situation. I, I can empathize with that, that things are, things happen, but it's, things happen, but also like this was a very serious, um, situation that, um, luckily folks were alert and neighbors were around and, and showed up and helped and the fire department was called. But, um, it could have been catastrophically worse, um, and because of the neglect that happened, and that is extremely concerning. I appreciate the conditions of approval. I think that they do help us move forward. I think that's all I have to say at the moment.
Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Yeah, I appreciate, um, what Commissioner Scavdall said. I think it's also worth noting that if the fire had grown, um, that there would likely be, um, some legal, uh, and potentially, um, uh, you know, can't think of the correct word, but a potential arrest, like if there was actual, um, damage or, or, or life hurt that, that this, this would have resulted in a different situation. So I definitely appreciate that. I also want to recognize that accidents happen all the time and a lot of times we get lucky. So I think I'm still not 100% sure yet.
Okay. Um, I got a quick question for staff, um, cause I'm, I'm kind of right there, like on the fence, you know, like lots of things, but then these conditions of approval seem, for lack of a better term, very strong. Bulletproof might be too triggering for some people to use that, but it seems like staff has implemented, uh, conditions. But I just, I just want to throw out a hypothetical, everything goes fine. First inspection, it's a really hot year, water use has increased, and you go out for a second inspection and numbers don't jive, what happens?
So the first thing that would happen is we would, uh, as the commission recently approved the modification to the ordinance that gives the department the ability to suspend the permit. We would suspend use of that site until we could have information to understand why the numbers don't jive. We would evaluate that. And if it turns out that something less than honorable was going on, that it'd be, it's got to for a revocation with the board of supervisors.
Okay, so I, I hate putting you on the spot. Inspection happens in August, there's plants in the ground, numbers don't jive, you would be willing to suspend that on the spot?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I mean, part of our struggle here, frankly, the reason the staff report was written for denial is because water theft is, is one of those things relative to cannabis that's really not allowable. That, that is a, a significant issue. The fire is a significant issue, don't mean to understate that at all. But, uh, when it comes to, uh, water, we spend a lot of time making sure we get the water right. And if people are, um, for lack of a better adjective, cheating the system, that's, that's really not acceptable.
Okay. And I have one more question for you. This, if approved, the May inspection happens and staff finds that B-32 isn't met, like safety procedures with Coupa and fire hazard, what, what would happen at that moment?
At that point, we would issue a suspension until it's brought into compliance.
Okay. So you've alleviated my concerns. Thank you. Are there any other questions, discussions? I'm gonna, out of respect, do a roll call, cause this is definitely not gonna go can, uh, one, uh, all one way or all the other. So if we can please get a roll call?
Sorry, technical difficulties. Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdall?
No.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Um, applicant has been approved and, um, these are the tightest COAs we've approved, so.
Lot of work to do.
Yes.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Do we want a five-minute break before we go to other three projects or can we go through them?
Do you need five? It's chair's prerogative. I know that, uh, uh, there, there is some timing constraints for us. And so I would say that depending on what the subject matter is for pulling these, if there's something we can address relatively rapidly, that'd be great. Although I do notice that there are quite a number of people online and so they may be wanting to speak to this, so.
Back in at 7:02, one minute late. Um, good job. Oh, we aren't recording.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so back in 7:02. Um, I misspoke earlier and, um, we have one more public hearing before we go to items pulled from consent. My apologies. So we have Cana Dreams LLC special permits and, um, we'll, staff will give us a presentation.
There we go. Good evening commissioners. Um, I am Augustus Grosshaw, um, associate planner for Humboldt County. I will be presenting the denial of the cannabis, excuse me, Cana Dreams LLC special permit for existing outdoor can, cannabis cultivation. Um, included in this, um, application was a special permit for certain setback reductions, which I will elaborate on. Um, this is application number 12088. And it is at 8,700, um, Kings Peak Road in the Edersburg area. Continue this on, if I could find the mouse, there we go. So here we have the aerial imagery, um, for the, um, location of the APN. You can see from here that it is completely surrounded by, um, public lands, um, for the Kings, uh, Range National Conservation Area, which is Bureau of Land Management jurisdiction. Um, the applicant did obtain a easement by their request, but I will be discussing further on that, um, later in the presentation. Um, Kings Peak Road itself, however, is county maintained. Um, the project itself was an application for, um, 9,500 square feet of light deprivation, um, cultivation, um, as well as 950 square feet of ancillary nursery. It was proposed to be, um, drying only with all other forms of processing off-site. The water resources were primarily from diversion, um, uh, and required 88,700 gallons for irrigation. Um, the water storage available on site is presently 89,500. But the proposed total would have been 171,000 gallons. The power, um, was proposed to be hydroelectric and a solar array. And as I mentioned, they need a setback reduction both from the diversion and the hydroelectric, as well as from those pa, public lands. Here we have a quick display of the surrounding cannabis projects. All of those are beyond the, um, public lands of the Kings Range Conservation Area. The Bureau of Land Management initially responded on June 26th, 2023, which, with concern regarding the legal access to the property, um, across the Bureau of Land Management lands. In response to that, the applicant obtained a right-of-way, um, from BLM in accordance with that request. Um, following that, on November 5th, just after we noticed it for an additional hearing, um, for an initial hearing, um, the Bureau of Land Management, uh, responded with additional comments, namely that, uh, the right-of-way that they had issued prohibits transportation of controlled substances, um, as well as presenting concern regarding sediment delivery to adjacent water courses and concern regarding the proximity to northern spotted owls, Coho salmon, Chinook salmon, and steelhead. I would like to reiterate what we've mentioned in past presentations is, is that, um, legal access requirements are absent from the code and we have suggested approval for other projects, um, despite, um, the Bureau of Management, Land Management's concern in the past. However, in this case, the property is fully surrounded, um, by that, uh, public land and there is nearby sensitive habitat that they actively manage, manage. Um, and that therefore changes our recommendation. Um, the product, operation would be as close as 88 feet from the Bureau of Land Management lands and with the apparent conflict with their management goals of that land, um, these suggest that, um, it may not be appropriate for us to issue special permits for that setback reduction. I should also note that this property did, um, receive, um, $90,000 in grant funds for both water storage and renewable energy. Um, these were state-funded grants, um, specifically for assisting provisional licensees with gaining final approval. And a portion of these funds have already been utilized to implement that additional water storage and solar. Um, so if this project gets denied, there will be an open question regarding what action would be necessary, um, with that already installed infrastructure. That is something that staff will be, um, discussing, um, though you may comment on it as well. I believe that ends my presentation, um, with that recommendation of denial due to the proximity to the sensitive habitat and Bureau of Man, Land Management's request. Um, though, an alternative resolution, resolution has already been prepared. If the planning commission determines the findings for approval, can be made despite the Bureau of Land Management's opposition. However, of course, the approval of that alternate is not staff, staff's recommendation. Thus ends my presentation and staff is ready for, um, any questions you may have.
Is the applicant on Zoom tonight?
I don't see their name, though I was expecting them to be present.
I guess that was gonna be, my, to my larger question is, um, have you spoken to the applicant? And, and I'm curious where they stand with, um, the recommendation for denial.
Well, naturally they're against it. Um, they have been racking their brain for, um, alternatives that may support approval. Um, but it does not seem that their rec, their ideas would quite, um, meet the requirements that, uh, Bureau of Land Management has been putting forth.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Scavdall?
One of the BLM letters in the staff report is actually dated, uh, July 23rd of 2019. Uh, and that letter, um, does address the right-of-way for the driveway. So I think the applicant has been aware since July of 2019.
I believe that would be accurate, yes.
The other thing is, um, and, and I agree with you, you said that in the past we have, um, approved projects, uh, that have to cross federal lands for their access. But this case seemed, in my opinion, seems a bit, a little bit different because the applicant specifically has a, procured a right-of-way that specifically excludes the transport of cannabis. In the past, when we've looked at these things, they've had access, say off a Forest Service road or a BLM road, but he didn't, they didn't actually, we, we didn't actually have a specific legal document, a right-of-way that says you can't transport cannabis this way. Granted, that may not be necessarily our issue, um, if we permit the projects, applicants issue, I understand that. But the applicant, i- in your staff report, there were, there were some proposals to perhaps use other methods to transport. Those haven't been covered in the secret document or in staff review, so, um, we're not suggesting that the applicant, if we approve this, could use other methods of transport, are we?
Correct, not necessarily. We would need additional review for, um, if transportation is the concern, we would need more review.
Okay. If, if I could, um, call your attention back to the, uh, I think the last meeting we had, where a question was brought up about a recent, uh, court case that said cannabis was illegal and so people have a right to say that can't be transported across their property. The position that we have taken consistently is that we're not approving the transport of cannabis anyway. This really has to focus on what's going on on the property. And so that's why this recommendation really is about the circumstance associated with this being, um, property that is completely within BLM land, that has sensitive habitat all the way around it, that supports endangered species. And, and so that's really the focus of our recommendation because we don't approve the transit of cannabis.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, I wanted to point out, I think this is, this one goes perhaps even a step farther in that clearly the owner of this property doesn't have, clearly doesn't have a legal right to haul timber, uh, out of this property either, or certain things like that. So, um, it seems a bit more strict than some of the, uh, some of the cases we've seen in the past. So, I, but I, I also understand, also, yes, we've approved set, uh, reductions in the setback in the past, but the lands haven't necessarily been conservation lands, uh, that are specifically there for, um, you know, the support of some of the wildlife and biological, um, issues that are here, so, thank you.
Mr. Kuriazzi?
Has, I'm curious, has the applicant, um, explored possibilities for cultivation that would maintain the 300-foot setback? Is that an option on that property?
The property is much too small to support a 600-foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not at this time, I'll see if there's any public comment.
Mr. Kuriazzi?
Uh, it's a little bit more procedural. I'm, I'm curious why, um, it was suggest, you were suggesting a special permit for the operation of cannabis cultivation rather than a conditional use permit?
The special permit was for the setback reduction. The conditional use permit is for the cultivation.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't see mention of a conditional use permit, but that, it would be a conditional use permit.
Yeah, you mean in the?
I believe in this case, um, it is special permits, um, all the way down to the cannabis level. Um, certain sizes and locations for cultivation can be approved with special permits that you all don't necessarily see often.
It's because it's between, I'm sorry, between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Okay. I got a handful of questions, so. Uh, can project be moved? That was asked, um, you say the project partial is too small. Can you please, uh, refresh my brain how big the partial is?
From the north and south? From the north and south, I'm not certain, but it's significantly less than 600 feet. I believe it's closer to 120, just off the top of my head. I don't have the areas on a map at this moment.
So, the dimensions of the property, it's not like a 40, where you'd have 1,200 feet, where you could put it right in the middle or something like that?
Correct.
So the property lines are less than 600 feet, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was, the other question, we are looking for a special permit for the hydroelectric and the diversion, point of diversion. I'm curious, the setback, for the setback reduction. So I'm curious, hydroelectric and the point of diversion, we need a setback reduction for that? That's what you presented in your staff report?
Correct. They would both be on the stream itself, and so we would need to reduce the streamside management area setback in order for them to be installed.
Okay, I just misheard. I thought you meant a setback reduction from BOM, and that's where I was like scratching my?
It is both. There are multiple setback reductions.
Okay. And then when I was reading, and I might have missed this, that I'm going to go back to endangered species now, NSO habitat, but what I was reading as far as sightings there, I think it was like early 2000s? Has it been, has it been more than a decade since there is an actual NSO activity in the proximity of the project?
I do not recall. I defer to what I previously written. I would say that it's just the nearest sighting, and I haven't seen many more recent sightings in other areas.
Okay, because we're tasked with the staff report at the end. Can we make the findings to approve the project? So what I'm asking is, when is the last, can you, when is the last report of NSO activity? Is that's one of the protected species we're potentially wanting to encroach upon? So it doesn't have to be right now, but just, you know, whenever we get to it, it's something that is going to be important. And then, what, piggybacking on that, if it was going to be approved, what would that finding need to be? Because there is, you mentioned alternative language. So usually, if we're looking at different options, we're presented with different findings. So that way, we can deliberate and say, okay, we can make that finding to say it's not going to be detrimental to the health, welfare of the endangered species, or whatever that wording may be.
The alternative findings are present in the attachments that you have been provided with. There, that should be?
So if we can get those pulled up, so that way, members of the audience and the commission, because for me, I read all this stuff at home, and then I have zero internet access on my phone to re-pull it back up.
So that should be attachment to its open legislature, so we can pull that up.
And that's, the only other question I had was, there's this thing called prescriptive right-of-way, because we were talking about the potential right-of-ways. Do we have evidence that this project's been in operation for, what is prescriptive? Seven years or something like that, I think? I can't remember if it's seven or 10 years, and I don't want to speak as an attorney. I just, like, do we have evidence that it's been operating for at least a decade?
So, no.
Okay.
And, but the other thing that I'm really trying to encourage the commission to do is just stay away from?
Stay away from the right-of-way.
The transit discussion. It really has to do with what we're approving on the property.
I crossed it out. Thank you.
Yeah, so do I. With the commission's indulgence, I'm going to share my screen just to give you a sense of what the site looks like from an aerial view. So if you can see my cursor, this is moving on my screen, but not up there.
And for those following along, staff is just clarifying some questions for the commission. Then we will open up public comment, give the applicant the opportunity, and then members of the public.
So if you can see where the cursor is, it's the parcel just below that. And you can see over on the right side of the parcel, the two open areas there. That is where the cultivation area is. And then, one of the things that's a little bit interesting is you can see that that's just typically very heavily forested property. And some of the darker shading of some of that area would indicate that that is probably, if not old growth, older growth forest, which would be likely habitat for northern spotted owl and also for marbled merlet. And so I think that is the reason that we're taking the comments from BLM seriously is when you look at the context of where this is, completely surrounded by BLM property. It is an inholding to BLM. And there is reason to believe, based upon the aerial evidence, that there is quality habitat there. It's not like this is fragmented or scattered habitat. This is a solid area of habitat. So I will stop sharing and allow Augustus to bring up. And the applicant is online too, so when we come to that, we can?
We're going to go over this information real quick, and then? He's bringing up the evidence.
I have shared my screen, but I can see that it is not being shown up there.
It's showing up on Zoom.
I see it on Zoom here. Not on my computer, on Zoom.
I think we're still seeing Director Ford's screen on the big screen.
I did. On Zoom, we're seeing Augustus' screen.
What I was asking is the finding we would have to make if we were wanting to potentially approve the setback. I just, I'm trying to, before we hear the presentation from the applicant, I'm trying to wrap my head around making sure we fully understand what finding we would have to make.
So if I could maybe just try to paint that picture. Essentially, the setback is there fundamentally to protect public access areas. But in this particular case, it's also granted, and the commission can override this, but it's granted to protect natural resources. And so what the commission would need to find in support with evidence is that in approving cannabis and allowing the continued use of cannabis at this location, that it would not adversely affect the biological resources that exist on the site, would not adversely affect the habitat that's available there for sensitive listed species, including marbled merlet, northern spotted owl, I think koho, Chinook, and steelhead.
Yes, go ahead.
And in general, every project, we're needing to include, find, make those findings as well. Is that right?
Not every finding has those species in play as much as this one does, but where they are in play, absolutely need to make that finding.
Any other questions? Mr. Kuriezi.
At the risk of bringing up the right-of-way, I'm curious if, because the right-of-way did specify for residential purposes only, do we need to think about the commercial use and the employee traffic at all? Is that within our purview or not?
So because our code does not require a finding to be made relative to access, we have taken the position that we're not reviewing for legal access, the adequacy of the access.
So I think that is all the questions the commission has at this moment. So now we will open the public comment portion of the hearing, and we will go to the applicant who has 15 minutes to present, up to 15 minutes to present, and then up to five minutes to rebut any public comment. I see 2906 hand up. Is that the applicant? Because the applicant will get the first opportunity to speak.
Star six.
Star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hello, you're unmuted. Are you the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
My name is Philip Kreider. Yes, well, I've lived in Old County since the 70s. Been a property owner here for over 35 years. I moved on to the property, the project property, in 1992. I've wanted to live in the King Range from early on. After moving to Humboldt, I studied forestry in college. Was drawn to the area because of the trees there. In the 80s, I worked locally planting trees in the headwaters of the Matul, and was interested in restoration work being done locally. I read the book, Pacific Watershed Associates, about rural roads around like over 20 years ago. I've gone out to some of their sites where they did restoration work. And so I was really excited to work with them on the permit process. My Pacific Watershed Associates were the first people out there, and they helped me develop a watershed resource protection plan. The biologists and I walked the whole property, mapping out watercourses, noting problem areas, taking pictures, discussing best management practices. This plan has been used, the watershed protection plan, I've used it for the last seven years. The process of inspections, noting where improvements can be made, conditions, as all, helped me make the property a better place. Working with biologists and engineers, they all seem to be working well. I realize the BLM's concerns. There's a few things I'd like to say, like, there's no fish in the creek that's on the property. It's a tributary to the North Fork Bear Creek, which does have habitat for fish. I think it's had fish there in the past. Like, there's the concern about sediment delivery. We've worked with biologists. I don't think there's any, like, danger of sediment delivery into the creeks. See, I've done research on the, I think there was like spotted owls within a mile of the site. Maybe they saw like a nesting pair back in the 50s. I tried to, today, like, research when the last sightings were, but I didn't get any on that. So, anyway, I really liked the process, the, about conditions. I was kind of surprised that the BLM didn't want to work with me. Like, they weren't accepting the science of all the people I've had out there, the biologists and the agency people. They all seemed to approve of the project, and then BLM came in, and I didn't really see what the science behind their conclusions were. That's about all I have to say. I think I can run the garden out there without any impact. And I recognize the conditions are no further development, and I don't plan on developing it further. It's very mountainous area, and the garden sites are at the very low end of it. And there's some roads that did extend further up the mountain, but I've actually decommissioned a lot of those roads by putting water tanks on them. The footprint is no more than it was, like, the development is no more than it was when I first moved on to the property. The hydroelectric that I built, it's on the same, the intake and the turbine house are on the same place where the guy that lived there in the 50s had his. And I moved into his cabin when I first moved there, and I built a house on the site where his cabin was. So there's no bigger footprint, as I said. Let's see, yeah, that's about it.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Levy has a question for you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Mr. Kreider, for your comments. And you do make a persuasive case that you have been and are a very conscientious and careful steward of your land. I guess the reason I just wanted, what I wanted to ask you is, you already spoke to the fact that despite the recommendations and opinions of various other experts that you had worked with, that BLM remained unchanged in their, in their opposition to this. I guess what I wanted to ask you is, did you, in addition to what we've seen in the staff report, and there is some correspondence with BLM about this project, have you had any personal meetings with staff there as to, about their opposition to your project?
No, I have not.
Okay, well, thank you. Just figured I would ask. That's all.
Although the BLM, I did meet some BLM people. Although, the, the BLM, I, I, I did meet some BLM people, uh, there when they came out to look at the right-of-way, and so I talked to them, but I didn't talk about my project to them.
Got it, okay, well, thank you.
Um, any other questions for the applicant? So I have a question for you. What is the partial size of your project? Like, how many acres?
It's eighty acres, like, two forties put side by side going up the creek, up the mountain.
Thank you, that's, that's kind of what I saw in the, in the maps I got pulled up here, I just want to clarify that. Or, so, that's all of your presentation at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, so you do have up to five minutes for rebuttal, um, when all the public comment happens, so we're going to mute you now at this moment, and then we will unmute you at the end of public comment. Are there any other members of the public that are wishing to speak on this? Seeing no other hands up, um, I guess we'll go back to the applicant. If there's anything you would like to add, please raise your hand at this moment.
I, yes, I'd just like to add one more thing. I've, I've been a farmer, and, um, I've grown tomatoes in Africa, I, and I don't really see much difference between cannabis and tomatoes as far as, like, an impact to the environment, although, uh, there's a lot of things that I've learned in the permit process, and I, I, I think it can be done with very low impact if, uh, at all, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. If we have any clarifying questions, we may call upon you, so please stay on the line, because at times in discussions of, or deliberations, the commission does come to potential conditions of approval or other things that may warrant, um, so, I'm going to close public comment at this time, but leave the option open, um, and I'm gonna come back, I usually don't do this, but I'm gonna ask, start off with a question, and I'm gonna ask staff to pull up page fifty-seven of your staff report. And I apologize to be this way, but page fifty-seven, I'm seeing a partial that's two thousand five hundred and eighty feet by one thousand two hundred and ninety feet.
Yeah, it's about twelve hundred feet wide, um, which, six hundred feet on either side, it would be nearly impossible for any cannabis to fit without that setback reduction.
So, I'm just asking a question here, you presented earlier, um, I'll bite my tongue there, um. A greenhouse could potentially, you know, you could potentially have a fifty-foot clearing by five hundred feet.
It is likely that that would require tree removal to relocate the place of their clearings as well.
I, I think one of the things to consider here is, it is limited, so you're, you're conceivably correct, you could fit it within a narrow band, I looked at that myself, it was twelve hundred and forty or sixty feet, something like that. But as Mr. Kreider mentioned, these are on the, I think he said, the southern end or the lower end of a ridge top, and it's very steep, very hilly. So it's not like you've got a flat canvas to work with and you can move things around on, on a plane. You've, you've got to move things around in a, a manner that would allow, uh, sun and, and be able to place it, and then you've got to get access there. So, part of what then would need to be done is to determine if that relocation were environmentally superior.
I, I'm aware of that, so that, I feel that there's two questions, do we move the project to meet the setback requirements, or do we look at what this is doing to the habitat? With, with the setback, with the setback that it is right now, and I, I apologize to come out with questions, it's just, it's challenging for me when I'm presenting something that is different.
That's, that's fine, we, I think part of the struggle is, is I don't know that we've ever found, relative to a site that's within six hundred feet of public property, that there is an environmentally superior option. It's not that it couldn't be done here, but that would require significantly more analysis than what we currently have in front of us. If that's something the commission would want to do, that would be direct, that would be a continuance direction to the applicant, to do the biological work, to calculate the ca, the environmental consequences of that. What's the zoning here?
I, I just want to make sure that we have all potential options out there, is, it's kind of where I would, that's why I asked this.
Okay, so, yeah, I, that, that would, that could be an option.
It'd be a long road, it'd be a very long road.
It'd be a long and very expensive.
Yes, yes, I agree, but I just, I just want to make sure we have all the potential facts on, and that's not what was presented before.
Apologize for that, that is true.
We've been trying to locate page fifty-three, it's, everything we have is broken up into attachments.
Page fifty-seven, it's on the, it basically, it, it just shows the, the parcel, twenty five hundred and eighty by twelve hundred and ninety, combined staff report, it's, uh, it's a moot point at this moment, maybe, I just, I just wanted to put in the record the size of the partial.
I, I did measure it vertically, and it's, it's roughly over twelve hundred and fifty feet, something in that zone.
So, I will stop yakking, and Commissioner Kurayazi did have his hand up first, and then I'll go to Commissioner West, I apologize to jump out like that, but it just, sometimes I do that.
In, sort of clarifying the project as a whole, um, if, if there were, if the setback issue wasn't, or, um, if the setback issue was not an issue, are all other pieces in place, or has the applicant kind of start, stopped in their process because of this setback issue?
The setback was issued very close to, um, a proposed, um, hearing with an intent to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think just to the process question of where, um, the image was that you were looking at, it looks to me like you're looking at, um, attachment four B site plan. So, in case staff would wanted to, to reference that.
Because I went off Dropbox, and that, it just, it luckily worked tonight, the last three commission hearings, it hasn't worked.
Again, this project, um, it's not just surrounded by BLM lands, it's surrounded by the King Range National Conservation Area, so I think that's even, you know, to a certain extent, higher level, if you will, um, when I think about environmental impacts and, and the potential impact, and... Yes, sorry. And BLM's on record of having the exact same objection, in fact, being very consistent in every one of their letters for the last five and a half years about the setback requirement. And the applicant hasn't met with BLM to discuss that. You know, I'm having a hard time, um, reducing a setback that's intended to protect the wildlife and on public lands, particularly in a case where we're in a national conservation area and where BLM has given ample notice of their concern regarding the setback.
Is that everything?
That's it.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner West?
Um, I, I have similar feelings to Commissioner Scavdahl, where I think there are a lot of, a lot of factors here, I see why, um, staff is recommending denial, and, and, I mean, the consideration of any project is weighty, but I think a denial is always a particularly weighty thing to consider, and I, I feel for the applicant, um, and I also see why, um, staff, um, is making the recommendation that they're recommend, they're recommending.
Yeah, well, first of all, I, I very much appreciate that what Commissioner Scavdahl just said, um, I think that's correct, I too think of the King Range National Conservation Area as being of a higher, more protected standard of, of conservation lands than, than a lot of other BLM lands, or even a lot of national forest or other public lands. You know, what is, what is troubling, what is, what is hard about this is because I, I want to give the, the applicant full credit, um, not just from what he said, uh, just now on the phone, but from what we read in the staff report, it does appear that this project has been designed and is, would be done with about as little impact as I could imagine a cannabis project have it, you know, I mean, it's, um, there's no generator, there's no regular use of generators, light depth cultivation, um, seems that the water storage and water is, is all being, you know, managed very responsibly for, for other impact, and I would add that actually being all the way over on the far eastern edge of the parcel is, is, is probably the least impactful place that it could be, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's very near to the road, that, the impacts to wildlife in this area are certainly, you know, the road is, is one conduit that would have those impacts, uh, not just for this project, but for all the other people who use it. And as Director Ford noted, it, it appears that the far western edge of the parcel, and then what is to the west and north of the parcel is, is the, you know, prime habitat that we're worried about here. But, um, so I want, I wanted to acknowledge that, but I, I, I kind of come back to what Commissioner Scavdahl said, there's, there's been a long history of the BLM raising concerns about this, uh, project going forward on its in-holding, or at least about access to the parcel. Director Ford has, has, has rightly told us not to focus on the transport issue, but simply on the fact that this does appear to have, um, unusually sensitive lands, uh, all around it, and, um, you know, I guess, I guess I don't think that I can find my way to supporting it, um, or, or rather, to, to, to overriding the recommendation for denial, I, I just would hope that somewhere along the process, um, that this applicant would have been put on notice that this might be a problem, um, because, I mean, he worked with a lot of different agents and, um, consultants, but he also worked with the county for quite a long time, um, and I, I feel badly if the county was giving him the impression that the, um, BLM's objection might not be a critical impediment to this being approved, so, that's all I have.
Mr. Scavdahl?
Just one more comment. And I, I just don't think it's the right site, and I don't think BLM would support a commercial tomato farm here either, so, it's just, it's, it's, it's a commercial operation in, in the middle of a conservation area, too close to the BLM lands, I think that's, that's really the issue, we can't meet the setback requirements.
So, Commissioner Kurayazi?
I'd appreciate, uh, Commissioner Levy's comments, um, yeah, I think I, I struggle a little bit with, I, I'm still sort of racking my brain around the process of when to pay more attention to a state or a federal agency feedback and when to get annoyed with them just submitting the same recommendation over and over again, and then not appearing at a, um, at a, at, you know, the, the public hearings for this. Yeah, so I, so I appreciate that comment, and, and I do, I would encourage county staff to help keep an eye on, on, on that, um, piece of that, in terms of avoiding the potential for leading applicants a bit too far down the road, not that I'm saying that that happened, but, um, yeah, I think also I am leaning towards struggling to, uh, approve the project. I, I'm okay with the setback, uh, reduced setback for the SMA, I'm okay with the cultivation, but I think in this case, um, waiving the six hundred foot setback does not make sense.
Yeah, one, one other question for staff I forgot to, um, bring up, but I, I did appreciate that the, uh, staff report mentioned that there was a meeting with BLM about this particular project on, I think, November twenty-first. I guess I just wanted to ask if there was anything more that was discussed there that is relevant to our discussion, um, beyond what's already been said or what was stated in the staff report.
Unfortunately, I wasn't present at the discussion, so I have a limited knowledge of that discussion, however, what I have been told is that they are absolutely against it, specifically.
Okay, and when you say specifically, you mean?
This project.
This project, yeah, okay, thank you.
I, I was in that meeting, and, uh, that is a correct characterization, there, there was really no give, there was no room for give, there was no room for compromise.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, it's a tough one for me, I'm, I'm kind of looking at this as like, a project getting this far, um, there are multiple biological resource studies from, uh, two different agencies, if I'm reading this right, um, they, they're not two different agencies, but two different companies, um, I'm reading through this, and it's a professional that's gone to college and been certified, not such as myself, that's saying they believe professionally this project will not be impactful to the habitat on BLM, and, you know, I just graduated high school, so, you know, maybe, maybe I'm not smart enough to understand someone's report, but I need to take a stamp at face value, so me reading this report, um, that is contradictory to what BLM's saying, BLM, I, I'm hearing is saying it just because of conservation, I understand that and I respect that, but also, I feel we as a commission have the ability to waive that, so, at the point in time that staff is getting this report that says, hey, your project will not be negatively affecting the habitat, it's, it's challenging for someone to come down this road, and then not only that, they're getting the grant money, so I, I, that's a little challenging for me as well, so, um, I understand where staff's at, but also, I do believe there is evidence in the staff report from professionals that the applicant hired to make that finding, um, it doesn't sound like the commission's wanting to go there, but I'm, just want to state my job as a commissioner, that I'm reading that and want to make sure that's on the record. It also, in reading the NSO, there's activity centers, but not detection habitat, so, there's potential, this place could be logged, that, that is another option, so, um, with that, kind of, I think I know where the commission... of, I think I know where the commission's at. So, unless there's any new information, can I ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution which does the following: Finds that the Cana Dreams LLC project's statutory exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, find the required findings for approval cannot be made, and deny the Cana Dreams LLC special permit.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Curiezi.
Yeah, I want to, I really appreciate that, Commissioner Mulder. I mean, it does definitely feel like it's boiling down to BLM versus lots of other studies. Yeah, that's a tough one. I think as a commissioner, I'm not completely sure. Yeah, it almost feels like picking sides, in a way. So, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Commissioner West.
I think just to lay a little bit in, a little bit more in on why, where I'm going to go with my vote. The consultants that were hired, well, first, I want to preface, I feel for the applicant in what we've a little bit been talking about, where it's, it's hard to feel like you're doing your due diligence and be surprised by the end result, especially when you're having your consultants tell you that they believe there's a path forward. To the comment about, like, that there are the, we're relying on the scientists, the agencies also have scientists, and they are the ones that are building the agency's policy around these decisions. And so, I think that I, I wouldn't necessarily, for me, characterize my decision being caught between an agency and a scientist. I think we're just caught between different scientists. So, that's, I think, where I'm coming from. And for all the reasons I said earlier, I will be supporting the motion.
Any other? I'm just going to add, you know, this, one of the reports I reread here, luckily, it's, you know, stamped 2019. So, if that report said, hey, there's no pathway forward, or something like that, I wouldn't be leaning towards, I'm, I'm obviously not going to go with the motion. But that's, that's kind of where I'm at, is kind of like, we have applicants, they hire professionals, scientists that have the degrees and the stamps and all that stuff, and then it, you know, it comes down. So, I respect everyone, no hard feelings. I am going to ask for a roll call, just in case anyone wants to vote one way or another. But, Commissioner O'Neil.
You know, in the few years I've been sitting up here, in the few years that I've been sitting up here, I could probably count on one hand, maybe a little bit half of the other, that staff has come to us and asked for a denial. So, I'm going to respect that they have done their due diligence, that they've met, you know, and a little unsure why the applicant wouldn't have made every effort to meet with BLM and resolve these issues prior to us sitting here. So, I'm going to go with staff's recommendation, because I, you know, I very rarely see them ask for a denial.
I respect that, and would agree with that as well. So, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Curiezi?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
No.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Project is denied. Will staff reach out to the applicant and then inform them of the appeals process? Thank you. So, now, we'll go back to items polled from consent, and we'll start with item number one, which I think was tree removal number five, yeah. P, Pacific Gas and Electric Humboldt Bundle, number five, tree removal. So, three commissioners, so I guess, so, that's a very good, sorry, thank you for bringing me back to point of order. Are the commissioners that asked for this to be polled, do they feel a whole staff report is needed, or is there a clarifying question? So, I'll start with Commissioner Levy.
I think I would prefer a staff report, given that I think we have time for it.
Okay. Then that answers the question. If one commissioner asks for a staff report, then we will have a staff report.
And if I could just, as a point of order, I, I was wanting to pull, I guess, one and three, because of issues pertaining to those two. I think another commissioner, or maybe a couple, also requested item two. So, if possible, could the staff report address all of these, since they do seem connected, to say the least, or similar? Thank you.
Yes, I think so. At once, in other words, one presentation, or?
Well, I, I'm, I guess, I have questions about a couple of them, and they're, they're sort of the same questions. So, that's why I'm, I'm-
I requested a poll as well, and I'm in the same boat.
Yeah. If that's not, if that's too difficult, you know, you, you don't-
Do I want to just present mine and all the same thing, if you have specific questions about different ones? How about that?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
So, members of the public, we're going to present all three projects kind of at once, and then go from there.
So, what I'll be doing is, I'm going to present my project. These are all coastal development permits, so they're all close to the coast, and they all involve trees, and they all involve PG&E. I put together a very brief presentation that would open the gateway for you to have questions. Okay? So, this will be really quick. Well, I don't need that. Here we go.
This is me.
Rodney, learning a building here. There we go. Just went to share, you're in the share tab, right?
Yeah.
Can I go back to the other?
Date modified.
Yeah, but go down here.
It would be as a title.
Well, if you go into PowerPoint, open, open recent, because this is your computer, so you should be able to get that.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'm not sure, huh? Okay. Okay. And, uh, this is here, get the, my share, I'm sharing.
Okay, just play one. Okay.
As you all may know, my name is Rodney Andel, Senior Planner, County of Humboldt. This is my presentation for one of the three PG&E coastal development permit and special permit projects. These projects, mine in particular, and I believe his are very similar, but they extend from Humboldt Bay up to the Orick area, throughout the coast of our county. These projects are coastal development permits to allow PG&E to perform vegetation management along electrical distribution lines in the coastal zone. For my particular project, work includes a removal of 27 trees. He has one that's removing 85 trees, and one that's removing-
A hundred, well, 106 work areas, 88 trees.
Okay. These special, these projects require special permits in the coastal zone for major vegetation removal. And the special permits for design review, however, we kind of go through the motions on those, because it's zoned for design review, but these projects propose no development that would require design review, no earth moving that would change the contour of the earth, or anything like that. As you can see here, there's a bunch of orange dots, and I, it's probably hard to see, but if you look at the coast, there's orange dots along the coast, and along the boundary of the coastal zone that's designated with the blue lines. And they, like I discussed, they extend from Humboldt Bay up north into the Orick area. And I think this is the same for both projects. The recommendation for both projects is to make the required findings for approval of these CDPs and special permits, and adopt the resolutions approving the CDPs and the special permits, subject to the conditions of approval. One caveat is, he received a letter today from Epic, and they had concerns about inconsistency with a, with a table he had in his staff report, which was the incorrect table, and it was acknowledging the, an incorrect amount of trees. And I think that's about it. And then, they also pointed out that our condition of approval in that staff report had a duration of the nesting bird season that was really consistent with what CDFW calls out the duration. But they had a bio report that called out an expanded duration, and we changed the conditional approve, the, the condition of approval associated with the nesting birds to mimic what was in the bio report. And I believe that sums it up. Thank you.
And I can try to give an equally quick presentation on, on my two permits here. So, you go to Zoom? Share, right? Yes, yeah. Share. Screen sharing. Okay. Statue. Uh, what statue?
Okay. And then into that slide.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Okay. Okay. Yes, so as Rodney mentioned, yesterday, we received comments from the Environmental Protection Information Center, and they commented that attachment to, excuse me? I believe it's attachment to A. Let I double-check this. Yeah, attachment to A was incomplete, and that was an error on my part. I should have included what was given to you as a supplemental tonight, as attachment to E. So, basically, I inserted the wrong table in the staff report. Attachment to E is a tree data table with work areas and scope of work. The Epic comment also pointed out that the staff report was inconsistent with the 80 trees to be removed in 85 locations. And that is true, although the attachment to E that was included as a supplemental tonight, if you go through that, the, some of the, the tree locations are identified with lat-long coordinates out to six decimal places. And that caused a little bit of confusion in terms of what was a site versus what, what characterizes site. But, attachment to E does identify 80 trees. Oh, I got that wrong, again. 85 trees at 80 locations. So, that is the correct number. As Rodney said, we did revise the nesting season in the conditions of approval, conditions A, condition A3, in the supplemental that was delivered to you today. And that made the duration of the nesting season consistent with the biological report that was submitted by PG&E. It extended it by 15 days further into February, or made, yeah, made it earlier in the season. And the Epic comment did identify a tree with, that was 99 inches in diameter breast height. The reported tree, which was tree ID number 25, and flagged that as concern that it could be considered old growth. That, that is a spruce tree. Those trees are typically shorter-lived trees that don't really establish themselves in old-growth type habitat. And they tend to fall down in winter storm events as well. So, I think that addresses this concerns in the Epic letter. And I think, based on my recommendation, whoops, hit the wrong button again, sorry. We can make all required findings for approval of the coastal development permit and special permits, and adopt the resolution approving the coastal development permit and special permits, subject to conditions of approval. So, at this point, we'll open, pass it to the commission, to the chair.
Commissioner Scavdal, you got questions?
Well, maybe a point of order through the chair. Commissioner Levy, are you a director of Epic?
I am, and I did want to make that, disclose that. I am on the Board of Directors of Epic. I've actually submitted my, my resignation, but it won't take effect until the end of the year. So, I also had no knowledge of this letter that was drafted until I saw it today. But I am perfectly comfortable if the, if the right thing to do is to recuse myself from the discussion or the vote. I honestly hadn't had time to sort of process that question, or speak with anyone about it, but I appreciate Commissioner Scavdal bringing it up.
Yeah, I just want to avoid any appearance of potential conflict, so I-
Fair enough.
Personally, I think the Epic letter is just pointing out some corrections, necessary corrections to the staff report. Didn't seem to really be recommending, you know, a decision other than, and also, and also, I guess they were also pointing out maybe some expansion of the nesting season, which again, was presented inconsistently. So, I think they were just pointing that out. I just wanted to not have, make sure we weren't having an appearance of a conflict that might be there, even though I don't necessarily think there is one.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I, I probably should have mentioned it earlier, even before I, well, before I pulled it, or was one of the commissioners who pulled this project. We don't actually have a, or do we have county council on the line? I mean, I, I'm really happy to go with whatever they think is prudent.
Settle first.
If I may, yeah, if they're there, I'm not seeing Zoom, but I guess I'm wondering if, being on the Board of Directors of, of this organization, which did submit a letter, which is in part, why are we, why are we pulling this for discussion? Should I, should I recuse myself from the, from the discussion and any vote on the project?
Because Epic does not have a financial interest in the permit, you don't have a conflict. It's always a nice idea to recuse yourself for the appearance, but I don't think one is necessary.
Well, thank you. And maybe appearances are, are enough of a reason. Honestly, I, I don't think there's any part of this conversation that I need to contribute to that other commissioners can't, can't cover. So, I will, I will play it safe and recuse myself from the discussion.
Okay. Commissioner West, then Commissioner O'Neil.
The supplemental information with the, the updates to the- Um, the supplemental information with the, the updates to the, um, staff report in response to, um, the commenter's letter, wa, was that provided to, was that made public, was that provided to the commenter? Or was that, um, something that was presented, the supplemental information, um, noting the, um, correct data and the updated conditions of approval?
The, um, it's entered into the record, however, it has not been directly delivered to the commenter yet, to my knowledge.
Could you rephrase your question, please?
Yeah, absolutely, sorry, it's a little late. Um, I think my, my question what basically is, um, would the public commenter have had the opportunity, um, to review, um, the supplemental, should they have had interest in following up on it?
Uh, this was all done this afternoon at the eleventh hour, so I'm, I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Neill?
I just want to bring up that when I've had a similar situation, county council advised me that they cannot advise me and that I needed to come to them before the meeting if I had any questions, and that they wouldn't advise me in the meeting. So I just want to point it out because it's, seems like now there's, there's a different process, but, um, you know, he recused himself, so that's fine, but if anyone else has a potential conflict, they would advise that you come and ask ahead of the meeting.
Instead of on the dice?
Yeah, and that they wouldn't advise me like they advised him.
Okay. Okay. I don't recall that, so thank you, thank you for bringing that up, so that way, if, in the future, if I ever run into a potential, then I will, um, yeah. Yes.
Um, in general, it's nice if you guys come ahead of time, but that was just a really easy one, so I answered it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any other clarifying questions before we open public comment? Um, so I will open public comment. Um, there is not a single person in the public audience here, so we'll go to Zoom. Uh, anybody who wants to comment on this, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom, so we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Um, I'm going to ask staff for guidance. Should we do this one project at a time, or, uh, how do you want us to do?
I'm, I'm fine with one, um, motion to address all three, to address, address or to adopt the staff's recommendation with the exception of item number one, which has the supplemental with the, uh, modified conditions.
Okay. So that would need to be included in the motion if it was going to be all three projects to add the supplemental to number one?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Thank you, uh, staff for responding to that letter and, um, uh, and acting on those recommendations. I think they were, they were excellent recommendations, and I appreciate Epic for, for catching those. Um, and I did, uh, want to revisit the, the, um, the ninety-nine inch DBH spruce. Um, and it does look like that there was confusion on the part of Epic that that was a redwood, but not being an expert on trees, checking again that, um, I mean, that's, that's a very old tree, but it sounds like maybe there may not be a similar concern from environmental groups.
Spruce forests are protected, um, but spruce trees individually don't have the same status as, um, spruce forests do, if that helps at all.
Okay, and then do we, have you, um, did PG&E have an, a chance to weigh in on these comments at all?
No, we have not heard, um, response from PG&E, but one would assume they'd be fine with the additional conditions, um, because that was included in their biological report, so, um. And I totally did not give the applicant the opportunity to speak first, although nobody raised their hand, so.
You may want to ask if PG&E is in the, uh, the queue.
Is PG&E in the queue, um, and want to speak, Nicole Reese? Um, we will unmute you if you are from PG&E.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
She's got multiple, uh.
I, I'm on my phone and Zoom, so if you hear echo, please let me know.
We, we do, can you mute, um, one of them, either the phone or the, uh, the Zoom, so that we're only hearing you through one?
And my apologies for not asking the applicant to speak right off the bat, that's my bad.
Um, Ms. Reese, is one of the phone numbers yours that I can unmute?
The four one five seven nine.
Did she say two one four five? I, I, I can't tell from that, I only have the last four digits.
Yeah. So do you, the last four digits are your number, or just mute your phone?
Four six two six.
Got it. Okay.
So if she presses star six, she can unmute four six two six? There she is.
Okay, is this good now?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, good, bye. Um, no, yes, so I'm Nicole Reese, I'm the Senior Land Planner, supporting this work for PG&E vegetation management. Um, I was able to review the Epic report, and yeah, we do not have any objections to the additional conditions. As it was stated, PG&E had recommended the nesting season starting February fifteenth, so we are okay with that.
Thank you, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, um, I just want to, you know, just let everyone know, these are, you know, public safety, um, projects to remove hazard trees, um, growing near or, or hazards to PG&E facilities, and, uh, as mentioned earlier, can, can come down during storms and, um, can cause issues and outages, um, potential fires, so thank you for hearing, um, and reviewing our project.
Thank you very much, please stay on the line if there's any clarifying questions, um, the commission may call on you. Um, at this point in time, are there any clarifying questions for PG&E from the commission? No, I'm not seeing any, just hang on, um, if there is anything, we'll call on you, but I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion.
You're ready to make a motion? Okay, so let's. Um. Little bit more, so do you want to hold back your motion, or do you want to do a motion in second and get a discussion?
Motion, motion in second, get a discussion.
Okay.
I move that, uh, we approve consent item one with the revised, um, conditions and the supplemental information, uh, consent item two and consent item three for the PG&E tree removal.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a first and a second, and now we have discussion, Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Um, I would just, would staff, uh, consider adding the same, um, uh, changes to the resolution around the, the February fifteenth to August thirty-first? It seems odd to me to apply that just to one of the applications rather than all three.
If, if the motion maker is comfortable with that, we can make that change.
Uh, I would accept that change.
Is the second or good with that? Can you please say that in the microphone, so that way we have that on record?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, um, uh, quite a nitpicky request, um, but I can't resist myself. Um, in the conditions of approval, uh, I would like to request the, not the use of the word motorists in the traffic control conditions and request the use of, uh, the term, either omit the term motorist or use a different term like traffic control, acknowledging that we, not just vehicles use these, um, roadways for travel. We also have pedestrians and bicyclists, even in this remote of an area. Um, so just my attempt at trying to whittle away at our tendency to only focus on vehicles.
Is the motion maker okay with that?
Yes.
Is the second or okay? Okay. First and a second, is there any other discussion? Commissioner West?
Um, I, this isn't, I think this is more of a process, um, piece, but it goes along with this item, so I want to say it before we finish it. Um, I just, I'm thinking about, uh, kind of the supplemental and, and how we do things in, um, supporting the public and being able to, it doesn't look like, um, anybody from Epic is here tonight, so it's, it's not as much of an important thing, but, um, so I guess, well, before I go, um, asking for things, um, when we do a supplemental piece of information, is that supplemental available on the table also? Okay, um, that's helpful, um, but there's no, if, if someone was to call in, they wouldn't necessarily have access to this table that we have in front of us, correct?
We do put it into Legistar, so.
Okay.
When you go and look in there, it's not one of the identified attachments, but you can click on the meeting information, and when you go there, it'll list other things that are there and everything that's put there after the agenda is issued, all those things are, are there in the computer.
I see, okay, um, 'cause I didn't see it when I went first, but once you explained it, now I, I see that process, um. That's helpful to know. It feels a little bit like that's a, I don't know how to solve this problem, it does, it feels a little bit like that's a, a secret thing. It's a little hard to find.
We're limited by our technology.
Yeah.
We use it to the best extent that we can.
I understand, okay, um, I just wanted to note that, thank you.
Commissioner Kuriazzi?
I request, um, asking the applicant if they are okay with applying the larger, uh, February fifteenth to August thirty-first to all three applications. It sounds like staff is okay with it, but I'd like to ask PG&E.
Okay, so if we can please unmute four six two six?
She is.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the only other thing I would say, I, I hear everything you're saying about the access on, online, and I appreciate calling that out, but the way I was, like, when I was brought up, like, I, we didn't have the Zoom option back then, and we had to always come here in person, we had to always go right there and read everything. So technology has made life easier, but it wasn't so easy back in the day.
Sure, and I understand that, and also, I, I believe in public access of information, and that's where the root of, um, my question comes from. Also, I don't think I said, but thank you to staff for, um, putting together the supplemental, because that is also helpful.
So we have a first and a second, uh, I think we'll do a voice vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries, if we can, oh, please, someone can please get Commissioner Levy in for the, uh, last two agenda items we have. Which is, uh, report from planner?
Yeah. Um, given the hour, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to belabor the evening, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions from the commission for, okay, Commissioner West?
Um, I am just curious about if, um, there has been any, if there are any updates on the item that we considered on our agenda last time regarding, um, trellis netting and the cannabis ordinance.
Yes, we are working on that, we will be back with something, um, probably after the first of the year, realistically.
Um, to us or to the supervisors?
Um, one of the things I wanted to look at is I think the Planning Commission can institute a change like that. So if that's allowed by ordinance, and I'm sorry I didn't look at it yet, but I think it is, uh, we're just going to come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Um, I was curious if, uh, we could have insight into what might be, I think there was discussion of uh, bringing the VMT threshold topic, would that be coming up at the next meeting?
So we, uh, we're going to bring that back, uh, for this meeting, and then we've pushed it back to the nineteenth, and frankly, now we're going to push it back even more. Um, we had some questions about how the, the blocking worked and how the, uh, uh, miles traveled to work for each of those blocks. And so we really spent some time, actually today, meeting with a consultant to develop a better understanding of how those worked, um, and I'm glad we did, because it'll make for a, a much better discussion at the planning commission level. And so the other thing that, that we really need to do now is to articulate how this fits in with community values and, and really kind of present that range of options to the commission to, to grapple with. And, and so we're, we're not quite ready yet. We were a little bit perhaps premature in our, uh, ambition to, uh, start the discussion, but I, I think that, uh, what we're going to do is, is give you a much better platform in which to have this discussion.
Any others? Okay. Thank you, um, Planning Commission discussion items, anything anybody wants to bring up? Nope, uh, meeting is adjourned then at eight thirty-two.